Good evening, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed in our community, especially Mike Icazaldi.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
Ms. Spencer with the reading in the minutes. Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation report reviewed February 10, 2023. 3B, minutes of the city planning commission meeting held on January 26, 2023. 3C, city planning commission annual report for 2022. 3D, city of Scranton year-to-date aggregate financial summary through January 31, 2023. Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. I was happy to announce that I had a blast Sunday at the Holy Rosary benefit where the cops and firefighters played in the basketball game. As a grandson of a police officer and the son of a firefighter, I had to stay a little partial, but firefighters were victorious, so it was a great time, great night for a fundraiser. That is all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one thing to add. Just wanted to make people aware that Beautiful Blocks program is open for pre-applications, which will be accepted through March 27, and then awards will be announced in May for those who are not aware of the Beautiful Blocks program. This is through NeighborWorks. They've been doing it for a few years now, and they provide matching grants of up to $1,000 per property to groups of five or more residents to help make exterior improvements to their homes. And it doesn't have to be on the same block, but they would like them to be within a close vicinity. So if you know that you have some neighbors or people around the neighborhood and you might want to join in together to make some improvements to your home and you benefit from this grant program, then please apply through NeighborWorks. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else?
I guess I'd also like to say I had a great time with my son at the Police vs. Fire basketball game this Sunday as well.
I will announce for Mrs. Hoda-Wanis that the Friends of the Scranton Public Library are having their book sale that started February 27 through March 5, Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. till 6:30 p.m., Saturday 10 till 5, Sunday 12 till 3. As Mrs. Hoda-Wanis said, it's the best deal in town. Fiction, nonfiction, children's books, audiobooks, DVDs, CDs are a dollar to $2 at the marketplace at the Steamtown Mall, second floor, in front of the Crunch Fitness. Also like to announce that as we're approaching St. Patrick's Day, there is a contingency group coming from Ballina, Ireland. I believe some council members and the mayor of Ballina is going to be coming here. I know that they're actually going to come to City Hall. I think there's going to be a flag raising on Friday, March 10, and I know that they're going to be participating in the St. Patrick's Day parade on Saturday, March 11. That's our sister city, and they're celebrating their 300th year as a city. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizens' participation. Joan Hoda-Wanis.
It is going on right now. And you might ask, you know, what do they do with the money they make during these book sales? Well, after we pay the taxman his 6% blood money, the rest of the money goes towards children's programming. Every month, the second Sunday of every month, the Friends sponsor an event at the children's library. And March 12, 2:00 p.m., we're going to have a program with the Electric City Aquarium and Reptile Den, where they will bring in all these snakes and little critters, you know, the stuff that kids just absolutely love, okay? Very safe. The event is free. The only thing we ask is if you would like to come and bring your children. And I know you people got kids and grandkids and nieces and nephews, right? You just bring them, just call ahead that you want to attend so they have an idea of how many people will be coming. The phone number at the library is (570) 348-3000, extension 3015. It's a wonderful thing. Some months we bring in birds of prey. Other months, you know, we bring in mammals, kind of thing from various zoos around the place or, you know, sanctuaries. The kids absolutely love the events. So if you're free on a Sunday, March 12, 2:00 p.m., just call the library, say you'd like to come, and it's a free event. And if when you come, your child does not have his or her own library card, that's when you'll get it. In fact, I hope you understand that you can get a library card for your child on the day he or she is born. So it's a good deal. But thank you for mentioning it again. So where we stand with the audit?
My understanding is the audit is basically complete with the exception of the Gatsby 75. During caucus, we talked about having them, Kohansky come in here possibly for caucus next, would be next Tuesday, March 7, and have them kind of give us an overview. So we're going to ask them to do that. And as far as the 10%, I guess it would be rebate or fine for being late. I spoke to the mayor today, and she said, you know, that there's a possibility that they may pursue that.
Okay, that'd be good. If she does not pursue it, I would like to know why, because it's taxpayer money that's paying them. And for four years, they have been late, and I mean very late. So how are we doing on the arbitration for the fire and police contracts?
It's my understanding that the arbitration piece has ended, and now it's kind of in the lawyers' hands back and forth. She's hopeful that with the fire department, that will be, she's hopeful that that will be resolved by the end of March, and then the actual arbitration for the police will begin in early April.
Okay. I still haven't seen the current DPW contract on the website yet. Are they still bouncing that back and forth? Dotting the i's, crossing the t's?
Mr. Volenberg, could you contact the administration and ask them where they're at with that so that we can get that posted on the website?
Yeah, supposedly that was signed last September 13, so it's five months plus now. I was surprised to see in the paper that Marissa Duffy resigned last week as the head of Parks and Rec after only 10 months in that position. Is it just me, or do we have a revolving door here in City Hall? A lot of the department heads are in and out, in and out, in and out. We've had, you know, multiple BAs and heads of IT and treasurer's office and so on and so forth. There's only so many times you can tell, you know, the head of BA, you know, well, you're also going to supervise this, you're going to, his span of control is out of control. I'm just curious as to why this administration is losing so many department heads. It seems to be, you know, like a sucking chest wound here. So if you can get maybe some clarification in how she's doing and finding a replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoda-Wanis. Fay Farinas.
Fay Farinas, Scranton. I'm here tonight, I just want to voice, everything I say tonight is my opinion. This is a result of the culmination of years and years, about seven years, of no accountability in the DPW. I'm here tonight also because Mr. Smurl made some rather very odd comments last week about the DPW. People that have, we get recycling picked up twice a month. So a person that has two cans a month gets 24 cans a year picked up. A person that has four cans a month gets 48 cans a year picked up. A person that has six cans picked up a month has 72 cans a year. Now, I've been to many bars in the city. The city ordinance says that every bar, every business, nonprofit and regular, you know, they have to have a private hauler. When the health inspector goes to these businesses, when they open up a bar or a restaurant, before they get their license, they have to show proof that they're having a private hauler picked up. But Mr. Smurl mentioned, well, we have to have the DPW picking up, at least if it's $300. With 1,000 businesses, we'll make a lot of money. Well, let me tell you something. I went to bars, some of them have 10 cans, that is 240 cans a year. Some businesses had 18 cans, which is twice a month, which is 56, okay, or 36, rather. That is 432 cans a year. Some of them had, one business had 28 cans, which is 56 cans a year, which is 672 cans a year. I would have to live 28 years to get 672 cans of recycling picked up. I would have to live 18 years to have 432 cans picked up. A person getting 72 cans would have to live nine years. And each year I pay $300. So if I had to wait 18 years to get the, you know, the 672, that means I would have to pay 5,400, not 300, as Mr. Smurl recommends. Also, for the 28 years I'd have to live to get 672, that should be $8,400, not 300. The residents, the DPW is helping the favorites in the city. The administration is favoritism in this city, and they are taking care of a select few. They're also hurting the private haulers. They're not getting the business that they should be getting. It's wear and tear on the trucks for DPW. It's gas. It's workers that don't have to be doing that work that they're doing. This is not right. It has to stop. So if anybody thinks that Mr. Smurl is going to pass an ordinance, change this ordinance to $300 for a business, he has a rude awakening coming, because we're getting robbed. The residents that are paying $300 a year, why are we paying that if the businesses don't have to pay anything in seven years? Now, Mr. Petroface, the director of DPW, was wonderful. He told me last week that he is going to stop this, and I thought, I saw three bars that I went to that did stop. But now all these people apparently are calling up the city, saying, what are we going to do with these cans? Mr. Smurl said, oh, we have to let the DPW pick these up, because they're going to throw them in the woods. Who ever heard of such a silly thing? What business is going to take their recycling cans and go throw them in the woods? That's a criminal offense. The first thing they should think of, the very first thing they should think of is, how am I going to get rid of these bottles and my recycling cans? 18 of them, 56 a month, 36 a month. You call a private hauler. That's what the law says. You call a private haul, sorry, not the law, an ordinance says. The city ordinance says they must call a private hauler. So that's what they do when they have their recycling sitting at the curb, because the DPW didn't pick them up last week. Thank you to the director for enforcing that ordinance. So this has to stop, and it has to stop now. I don't know what to say. Jessica Rothschild, Mr. Smurl, probably Billy King, we're all going to be in favor of these favored people. I don't, I don't know. I have 24 cans picked up a year, and this person has 672. I've even been threatened. All these people are calling me up and saying, all these residents calling, saying, this is not fair. They cannot charge, we're paying 300 for 24 cans. Why should they get 672 cans for 300? So I want you to follow the law, follow the ordinance, I'm sorry, I keep saying law. Follow the ordinance and enforce this ordinance. It has to stop right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Farinas.
Yes?
No, I said, thank you, Mrs. Farinas.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Norma Jeffries.
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And the first thing I want to talk about tonight is to give an update that Beb Berrios was here and talking about the Lackawanna County prison and that she had started the process to work with the Lackawanna County prison to educate the inmates there on their rights for voting and all. And this was at the directive of Judge Gibbons. So it is the law that the inmates do need to know and to find out about voting. There were two meetings down there. When she got the approval, she did call me and ask me if I would assist her to go to the prison with her. I do have my clearance for down there to do volunteer work. So I did go down with her the one day, and it was very successful. We've made two trips to the prison since then, and there's been 20 contacts with the inmates there. And what our process is, that we first ask them if they're registered to vote. Most of them don't know whether they are or not. So we try to get that information. There's no internet connection that we can use at the prison, so we try to get the information and then take it to our homes and try to find out if they are registered or not. Then we take that back. If they are registered, then we will give them the information to apply for an absentee ballot. Those ballots are not ready yet, but as soon as they are ready, they will be mailed to them. And also, for those that are not registered, if we do find out that they're not registered, we do give them the information so that they can be registered. We're also trying to get, there's no, we cannot get access to the internet there, but they do have their tablets there at the prison. So we're hoping that they will open up those tablets to allow the inmates to learn about the voting process, to learn about the candidates that are running, so that they have knowledge about what to and how to, who to vote for when they get the absentee ballots. So that's a process ongoing, you know, we're trying to get everything that we can done before May, and so that they'll be educated, number one, and that, number two, that they will have the opportunity to voice their concern, their opinions, okay? I told her I had to use my five minutes to talk about her project, but my hot button today, of course, is the street signs. As you know, Saturday morning, it was snowing, so I didn't get to go out until later in the day. But I went and got my paper, you know, it's always good that my paper is delivered, and I go out to get the paper, sit down with my coffee, and enjoy my coffee and the paper. And what do I see? On the editorial page, a note and a letter from Joe Barberuti, I guess that's how you pronounce his name, on the street signs. And I said, oh, good, I've got another compadre out there who's just as concerned about the street signs. He also sent a picture of the street signs and how they're just hanging off the poles, which they are. And as I thought about it, I've been talking about street signs for about four years, and I've been given this list of the street signs. It's like about 75 pages, and I think Mr. West had given it to me, but I never could understand everything that was on it. And so I would go around and try to see if the street signs were there, because it starts out, and it says the type, the replacement date, the retro status, and the road. So when I look at this, I could never make eye nor tail of what was going on, because it says D3-1, street name, 225, 2021, good Vine Street. Well, Vine Street runs from 1800 block of Vine Street down to the 400 block of Vine Street. So how was I, as an ordinary citizen who's so concerned about the lack of, and the condition of our street signs, how am I supposed to follow a list like this, and why would they give me all this paper that means nothing? I tried to follow it, and I did go around trying to see if these street signs were really taken care of. First of all, on here with this list, they also had no parking, you know, all of it's wrapped into one. No parking, D3-1, street name, default. That means, to me, that means there's nothing, you know? So they didn't even give me good information, you know? So I was just concerned. I just want to see the street signs done. And when I think about all of this, we have the University of Scranton, we've got Marywood, oh, I'm out of time, I'm sorry, and we've got all that time, you know, we've got a lot of traffic coming into the city, and our street signs are still.
I will address this during fifth order, Mr. Jeffries. Thank you. I appreciate it. Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. I'd just like to say that this week on Monday, I stopped into the city clerk's office, got just a very small tidbit of information that I needed in regard to ECTV and what's occurring there. Now, after I left that office, I went to find their office. I don't think they have an office, okay? Now, I called their telephone number. They don't have an answering machine on their phone anymore either. So, and I know that this thing is going to propel itself through court as it goes forward, but the most troubling thing is just how corrupt the city government is, because that's what this document that in the city clerk's office showed, that the council members in 2015, I don't know, I'm just guessing, that's why I'm going to ask Mr. King to verify all the things I'm saying here today for next week. I think it was Pat Rogan, Bob McGough, Tim Perry, Bill Gahan, and Wayne Evans were on the council. And of course, Mr. Courtwright, who was convicted of malfeasance in office, was the mayor. And I'd like the people in home to pay attention to what I'm saying here today, because it's all very valid. Ozzy Quinn died in 2016. Now, the council hated the Scranton Lackawanna Taxpayers and Citizens Association, so didn't Mayor Dougherty. But we had a right to use this forum, and we had a right in the PEG channel to present ourselves here and talk about local government. And before the mayor was elected, he was a councilman. Now, when he gets elected, he removes the P from public in the PEG channel in 2015 in the franchise fee, I mean in the franchise agreement, and makes it an educational and a government channel. Now, ECTV kept running as a PEG channel until I did a couple videos, and then when the Scranton Times questioned why that garbage was on ECTV, they took my videos down. Now, this thing is going to propel itself through court, but for all these people who watch these meetings, the problem we have is the council that we have and the people we elect and the mayor, okay? Now, I've asked the city clerk and the law department, okay, who's on the board of ECTV? Now, they receive grant money from the city of Scranton, and I'm asking Mr. King to make public who those members are, okay? Because the public has a right to know. And the other thing I think we should know is, what other organizations do they belong to, and are they part of Scranton tomorrow? Now, I've sent them a certified return receipt letter, because I'm getting ready to litigate. And if I have to, I'm going to present the council to the judge, the mayor, okay, ECTV, and the whole thing. Because what this just, in my own mind, shows me is that our own government doesn't want its people to sit and talk about its elected government, and that's what the PEG channels were started for, by the Congress and Senate when they enacted those laws in the 1960s. And you know, it may seem harsh, but I want the people in the community to look at these meetings and just go back to what Mr. Smurl said last week and listen to what Mr. King said the previous weeks about having a discussion about the project at Naog Park, that you weren't going to sit and meet with me. But it had nothing to do with me. It had to do with the community, and that's what the PEG channel was designed for, to bring public officials out, sit them at a table, and have discussions about your community and try to make it better. And what we've created here are kings, because that's what you are. And when people ask, what's going on with the city government, it's the mayor. Look at all the people we've gone through. It's all political. We've had police chiefs, fire chiefs, department heads, it's just, it's a mess. And where's the grant money going? We don't know. We're still asking for an audit from a year and a half ago. And the reason the designation was changed on the PEG channel, okay, is because they didn't want the public to discuss issues they didn't want discussed. And the people in this town need to remove the people in election, in the next election cycle on this council. Whoever's up for election, remove them. And remove people who care about the community and the people and do the right thing, and it's time to start soon.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Eileen Dorsey.
I'm here to talk about Naog. We have a problem. It's not okay. It's recently come to my attention that there's a GCMC expansion plan in the works. I visit there several times a week with my family, as I have for the past five years. For several years, I lived at 532 Wheeler Avenue, which is approximately two blocks from Naog Park in the Hill section. Naog was basically an extension of my backyard. I was there every single day. I've brought my entire family there for any number of occasions, events, community programming. Since moving, our families continue to make use of the park several times a week. We love taking advantage of the natural diversity, of the many walking paths, the atmosphere of the park, the space for children and adults to play, and Naog's well-maintained structures. We have many parks in the city, but none of them have the character and the history that Naog does. Imagine how upsetting it was to me to learn that Geisinger has made plans to encroach upon this very small area by building multiple parking garages adjacent to the park, each one standing at least four stories high. Why are we allowing Geisinger to devalue a neighborhood that stands alone in Scranton for its charm, its location, and its real estate value? If it's about money, which most things are, then think of it this way. The construction of unsightly parking garages in the Hill section would decrease everyone's property value and increase our taxes. This is a nearsighted plan that will cause more than one permanent eyesore. But it's more than just ugly new construction and wasted space. Geisinger's expansion plan blocks natural light to Naog's rose garden, greenhouse, and people trying to enjoy the western edge of the park. Furthermore, Geisinger has backed out of a contract to rent a rear parking lot from Naog, which is an income source that the park relies upon heavily. I've walked by that parking lot many a time, including a few days ago when I wrote my notes here. It's never at full capacity. By all appearances, space is not the issue for Geisinger. And if it is, maybe they should look to expand somewhere other than the Hill section, which is pretty established. Geisinger is not a community-driven organization. They're a big business in Pennsylvania. They employ and treat many Scrantonians, but it's clear to all of us that their interests don't boil down to us. They're here to make money. They're here to make money. Personally, I would welcome the site of a Geisinger project making use of vacant space in our downtown. I know many other residents would too. Their expansion projects should not be zeroed in on the quiet and desirable residential area, which I'm pretty sure there are folks here who were my former neighbors and live even closer to the park than I did. So I don't know why that wasn't mentioned by them. If Geisinger feels too cramped, again, maybe they should look to expand elsewhere. And interestingly enough, Geisinger already has outpatient facilities at the Steamtown Mall. I went there a few months ago. I had to visit a specialist's office, so it's all the way at the top of the building. I had, I thought I was lost because I had to drive by so many empty parking spaces all the way up. Seems like there's a lot of room there where they could expand. In conclusion, there are very few neighborhoods in our city that have been as lovingly kept up as the Hill section. I'm begging you to listen to me and more than 1,000 other people who have signed the change.org petition so far. Geisinger's plan is a direct assault on us. It's an assault on the lifestyle of the people who live in the Hill section, the integrity of Naog Park, which has been in existence since the 1800s, and the legacy we're leaving to our children and our grandchildren. This isn't an abstract idea. This is happening. They've already leveled houses. It seems like they're moving right ahead and we haven't even had a zoning meeting yet. We all know that there's a solution here that benefits everyone and doesn't do harm to a historic natural area. It does not involve defacing the character of our city or draining funding from one of our most enjoyed public spaces. Again, like I said, over 1,000 people have already said the same thing that I'm saying. I'm just here to speak up. We need your help to firmly oppose the GCMC expansion plan and look to revive the downtown instead. As we move forward, please think of the long-term picture and do what is right for the heart and the pride of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Once again, I want to talk about a pet peeve of mine. Our utilities are killing our city streets. They make paved cuts and they don't fill them in right. A huge example is North Main Avenue, between Greenwood Street and Market Street. It's a mess. There's got to be paved cuts like every five, six feet in that stretch of road. And if they're not filled incorrectly, it's the bumpiest thing I've ever seen. And it's ridiculous. I know that's a state road, so that's up the PennDOT to have it taken care of, but maybe we could send a letter to them. Not if anybody drives that way, but it's terrible. And up in my section on Dougherty Street, where the ballfields are in front of the playgrounds, I requested this a long time ago, they put a storm drain in on that side of the street where the basketball courts are, which was great because that used to flood the sidewalk. You couldn't work, even walk there when it rained. But they put the storm drain in, but where they dug the road to put the drain in, it's falling in now. There's big dips in the road. So that's got to be dug up and repaved. These utilities just do a terrible job when they dig the roads up. And I know they have some kind of agreement with the city and I think the city should put their foot down and tell these people to fix the roads they were before they were dug up. That's all I'm going to say on that. Last time I was here, Councilman McCandrick, you spoke about people who have rental properties and if the one side is vacant and to not pay the garbage fee after they have their power turned off. I think that's ridiculous and I think you feel the same way. It's a... First of all, if you have electric heat and it's winter time, you turn the heat off, your pipes are going to freeze. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. So, because I know I have a rental property, but it's being rented and I live on the other side, but that's a ridiculous thing to have, to have to have your power turned off. So I hope that's changed. If it's an ordinance or whatever, I don't know. Okay. I spoke about this a while back. Is there any further information on the dangerous dog legislation? I know you guys were supposed to get together with the mayor.
Now, Mr. Volenberg, can we reach out to the administration and see if there's been any movement or action concerning the dangerous dog legislation?
I'll ask him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Because I did speak to the mayor about that. She said it does have to, the ordinance does have to be updated. Oh, just the small things, my last thing. Coming at the city hall, the section of steps right in the center is taped off. Does anybody know why?
I'll be honest, I'll have to reach out and find out, get some information as to when that plan is to have that repaired. I'll find that out, Mr. Jeffries. If you could, please, thank you.
What has to be repaired? Everything looks good to me.
I don't know exactly what the issue is or why they have that blocked off.
Okay. Coming in tonight, I looked to see if the steps were falling apart or something. Looks okay to me.
I don't know if it's something above or, you know, if you could find that out for us, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Volenberg.
I will, Mr. King.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Council, you know, isn't it a shame there's so many useless, worthless people engaged in the running of this city and they get paid for it too? I've talked to the past couple of months occasionally some that have property around Naog and Geisingers. They feel their property's worth about half what it was a mere few months ago, like I've been telling you what happened to mine. The neighborhood is just deteriorated, degenerated. I still got this filth next door parking in the lawn. I don't know. I got the people across the street parking, they've got seven cars in one house, they're parking out a piece of city property and made a, just a big muddy mess. Nobody cares. Like I said last week, I'm talking about one little single block that I live on. Think of the thousands of blocks in the city like that. I've had several conversations where people relate their neighborhoods have gone to pot too. Several years ago, Gerald Cross said this city has lost billions of dollars of worth. I don't think there's too many people know any more about Scranton than Mr. Cross. So now, we have Debbie and Jerry and Wayne Evans promoting the reassessment as a way to make up for this loss. This is fraudulent reassessment on paper. It's going to be like a used car salesman working a pencil telling you what your trade-in's This isn't going to work for so many people. It's a coming catastrophe for a lot of people out there. You know, not everybody's like W A N D P and can have a fleet of lawyers come in and not only get their taxes down, they got to blow what they were to start with. And we haven't even started yet. This is, this city is just, you're out of touch with so many people that aren't going to make it. They won't be here in a year or two like to watch this even. To change the subject real quick, I know most of you know Jimmy Cleve, remember Jimmy Cleve? That man spent half his life in this very building and there's nothing honoring his service to the city. One of the nicest things ever said to me in my whole life, we were sitting at Holmesdale at a car show about 20 years ago, and his daughter came over, we were eating it. He said, "I want you to meet my friend Ronnie Elman." That just was, those words just meant so much to me. And when he died, Mr. Dougherty didn't even have a flag half-staff for the gentleman. There must be some way to honor him here. And Ozzy Quinn too, there's another one. The city's full of people that have done so much for this city that aren't recognized anymore. I know Ozzy Quinn told me one time, he wished the city would send a sympathy card for everybody that lives here whose name was in the obituaries and that was nice. I don't see why it couldn't be done. It sure couldn't cost too much. But I wish again, there got to be some way to honor Jimmy Cleve with his service here. Over 50 years right in this building, he's the one that brought me to the, maybe you can be mad at him about it, but in the eighties, he brought me down here for a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That exhaust, the sign-in sheet, are there any other individuals like to be heard? Oh, Doris, I can't believe I skipped you.
Oh, I can believe it.
That was not on purpose, excuse me. Doris, Doris Kaloski. I apologize, Doris.
I just said that to Nora, but they don't want me to talk.
No, we want you to speak.
That's okay.
First of all, this isn't anything I was going to speak about, but on my way down here on Mulberry Street and Harrison Avenue, the Walk Don't Walk signs are smashed together so you can't read them. Okay, so I'm here more to talk about...
I'm sorry, Mulberry and Jefferson?
No, Mulberry and Harrison.
Harrison, okay.
Okay. Now, what I'm really here to talk about, of course, is my same old, same old, the hospital, my zoning, my house, the whole bit. I received a call from the hospital a couple of days ago, the Weevilay's on named Brian, and he told me that somebody had gone on Instagram and posted for us that I need to take it down, bogus information. He told me I lost all my credibility with the council, that they spoke to the council and the council members and we lost our credibility with them and the mayor and the park was also involved, Naog Park. Well, I'm here to kind of clarify all that in case they did talk to you about stuff, but the, first of all, somebody has posted on Instagram a link to a petition and they have the old pictures of the first zoning with the 125 feet, they're saying both sides of the street. It's not part of our group doing it and they're actually posting it with the Naog Park logo. So needless to say, the board at Naog Park isn't too thrilled with this either. So now the hospital then called me the next day and they said that they have identified the person and told them to take it down, but that I lost all my credibility. And I said, "Well, listen, the hospital hasn't had any credibility. They've said nothing but lies this whole time." So I just wanted to clarify that up because I don't lie. I didn't want to stay silent about it, you know, and just let it pass, but because I just don't, I don't like to, I don't lie. If I tell you, I tell you and I tell you what's the truth and if I made a mistake, then it's a mistake I made. But we are not, our group has not sanctioned anything that wasn't exactly the way it is. And in the 400 block of Colfax, they have agreed through compromise, which we did not really want, a parking garage across the street from us. In fact, in the very beginning, when Don King came and sat with us and Councilman Kyle Dottahue, they asked each of the persons from all the sections of the city, Greenwood and everything, what don't you like in the new zoning? And everybody else got, "Okay, I don't want a boarding house. Okay, I don't want an Airbnb." We said the only thing we really didn't want was a parking garage. So of course, that's exactly what they decided to put there, probably to punish us, but can't prove that. Anyway, on our 400 block on the even side, they are going supposedly, if this passes, build the 45-foot-high parking garage. And on my side of the street, it remains residential, mixed use. And where they're going to put the parking garage, it's institutional, capped at the 45 feet. Now, that's what they're proposing right now. And even though it's not what we want, we were willing to make a compromise because we knew that most of the people on council felt that everybody needed to compromise. Then the 200 block, it's also, one side, they left, they're leaving institutional, capped at 45 feet, which should be mixed residential. That would be the even side because they did not get all the houses there. It's just the opposite of what the 400 block is. And the odd side, where they got all the houses, that borders Wheeler Avenue, they still want to, they demand that there's still one Civic and that they are going to make it, which could be 100, now is 100 feet instead of 125. So the posting that was on there was just the old information. The person probably didn't know the new information. But the new information is all 25 feet shorter on the one. And that's the one that people have been attending, you've been attending the planning so you know basically what I'm talking about. And we feel that the hospital needs to compromise, just like we're compromising. I'll no longer be able to sit on my front porch for all the exhaust fumes going by my house with them entering and exiting the parking garages and the noise. My girlfriend said I like to play mahjong on my front porch. My front porch is probably going to be banned useless now. But we compromised for the sake of everybody because they already tore down the buildings. But it's not right that they don't insist when this comes over to you that they compromise on that 200 block because it really isn't fair to all the people. They're making it so only the people on Wheeler Avenue will never be able to sell their homes to anyone but the hospital and then they can give them whatever they want. It's just not right. And that's what I'm appealing to you and I also wanted to clear up any credibility issues that I might have had. I know my time's up, but I did want to clear up any credibility issues that you might have had with me or my group, our group, because it was not their doing and their responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Kaloski. Appreciate you clearing that up. Now the sign-in sheet has been exhausted. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Marie Schumacher, citizen and taxpayer. I hope that I hear something in motions today to establish a requirement for a report from the legal department on the progress they are making on obtaining the Meadowbrook rights of way.
The answer's a quick answer. They obtained one right of way last year and they haven't made any other progress since.
Okay, well, I mean, I, well, I've probably been to more, oh, I know, I've been to a lot more sewer authority meetings than any of you have. And again, you know, we're spending thousands of dollars every month waiting for that, all those rights of way to still be obtained. And I don't know, the whole stormwater thing has me confused. I thought we were going to have a stormwater authority. We went through, I do not know how many, how many studies we've had on stormwater, but nothing... how many, how many studies we've had on stormwater, but nothing ever comes of it, although, you know, Meadowbrook is a part of a serious, and it's been, oh my gosh, I think it goes back to the 90s, Meadowbrook One has been quite a while back, and it would be nice to get that fixed, but if you don't put some pressure on them to get those rights of way, you're not going to be able to do it. There goes some more. Now, while we're on water, go a little ways away, you might want to call, I don't know the name of the street, actually, I'm sorry, but got to get some more signs up. If you are going from South Side and you go past the Chamberlain, and then you go across South, South Washington and go up Broadway, the, the storm drain, assuming there is one there, and there's got to be, at that corner, we're, we're one of the better places for consuming calories, and for those of you who like soda bread coming up, they have delicious soda bread, which is Great Temptations at that corner, but it is, it's obviously blocked, and nobody could walk across the, the street, it goes halfway, the puddle goes halfway away across South Washington Avenue, so something needs to be done there. And while I'm at that, because that's something else that I don't like when I come downtown, and it rains, or it snows and the snow melts, we've got a lot of people, elderly people, handicapped people, that have to use wheelchairs and things of that nature to get across the street. And our corners are terrible downtown. You, you know, if you have to go a block or two blocks out of your way to be able to get across the street because the puddle is too large and too deep for you to get to, that should be number one. I don't like, people never set priorities. We have tonight in 7D, I think it is, or 5, I don't know, anyway, giving money away to beautify a, a building. Well, that's nice, if you have the extra money, but you got to do the priority things first, so that the people who live here can get across the street. And I want to say, I, I hate to see Ms. Duffy leave, because she had been at a meeting, and she told us she is a, a safety qualified for safety inspections, and she was going to do that with our parks, and I never realized that we didn't have anything, and without getting those certifications, I'm pretty sure that we, as the city, stand to get sued if something happens at one of the parks. And so I, I, she was going to do that, and now she's gone, but I think that should be another priority, is to get a program to have a safety evaluation of each and every one of our parks. I know there's one over, and, I don't know, I could tell you later, I don't, I don't go there that often, but I went there once, and there's a huge hole in the, in the slide, and it's down, you know, where it goes around, and if a little kid got up there and went down, my gosh, God knows what had happened to him, but my time's up, so.
Tom Coy in Manuka. I was amused with the planning commission's last meeting that you all attended. I addressed a number of issues there about procedures and city conflicts of interest. What was interesting on reviewing the, the ECTV was after they had tried to only allow people to speak at that meeting who had not spoken before, and I protested, because any open meeting, the slate is clean, and anyone can come up and public speak, it's not a one-time thing and you're done. Every public session, people, like in this body, get up to speak, whether it's the same thing or not, sometimes that's done for emphasis. I quoted the Sunshine Rule from them, and, and they backed down. Directly as I was walking, going to walk forward to actually speak at that meeting, Mr. Murphy says, under his breath, and I guess I have a new title, he called me Mr. Now, I find it funny that Mr. Murphy called me Mr. Rules, considering he evidently, from the paperwork that's shown, he has served three terms on that board, does not know Robert's rules, does not know how to run the process, and every time something confusing comes up, he has a stunned, blank look on his face, immediately turns right and looks to Mr. King for help. That's our chair. Mr. Finity was glad that, at 46 minutes and 32 seconds in, after everyone left the room, that we can go back to meetings with no audience. I guess the planning off, planning commission really doesn't like public participation. At 45 minutes and 23 seconds in, he spoke and he said, "I voted down the amendment, because I accepted that it's going to have a negative impact, but there's a greater, there's a larger good will, a larger good here. It's always nice to throw someone under the bus for a greater good. I think sacrificing people is just what government is made on, isn't it? That's what good governance is, is throwing people under the bus." Mr. Mur, uh, Mr. Murphy, the chair, at 49 and 16 minutes in, stated how up-to-date he is, when he said, "February, it's lucky if I can remember last week." I know that's a joke, but seeing how the, how the session was run, saying that I don't even remember last week, is really a bad statement for someone who is guiding a project to reshape the city. Mr. Posley had a proper, a proper comment at 51 minutes and 30 seconds in, he actually said, "I think that we need some training for our planning commission, as that would also be helpful." Yeah, I think they need some training, I think they need to know how to run as a governmental body, because it's not being run properly. As for what they also mentioned is, since they're looking for, going back to no audience, Mr. Anton requested that the, be brought forth at next meeting, the walkability study. So the walkability study is going to be back on the table for the meeting, so anyone who is interested in where the walkability study is in Scranton, should definitely take the time out to amend, to go to those meetings, because that's something we're all interested in, and we should show up for that walkability as well. Mr. Anton was brought to the table, and finally recused himself when he was reminded that he actually had a wife, whereas Ms. Davis properly refused herself and said she had a business conflict, evidently Mr. Anton had no idea how to explain that he was married and had a conflict. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Hello, I'm Rick Little from Scranton, Pennsylvania. Like to talk about civics and the Fourth Estate, because there's a lot of discussion about how things work, seems nothing works unless somebody funds a study first to see if it'll work, and I think everybody has gotten trapped into putting things off that are really important, that, that need to be addressed. There was a very articulate Democrat guy named Tip O'Neill, who said, "All politics is local." And I've, since I was very young, I was taught this, and, and tried to see the, the building blocks, basically, the kids in the schools aren't being taught civics at all, and they aren't being taught by the media at all, and so that's the Fourth Estate, that's the media. And when I first came to Scranton, I, I had a long-running public access show in New York City, the most acclaimed public access show, I believe, ever, having won eight Neighborhood Network Awards, four million people, you're watching it, and this started in 1989, and the digital revolution was start beginning, and through the 90s, so it's a whole different game to begin with. But public access, as in electric city television, is a thing, it's a thing in every local community. Last week, I talked about my hometown, Wheaton, Illinois, I'd been to the public access station there, I've been to the, you know, the public access station, when I won these awards, flew me to all these different cities, Milwaukee, Chicago, Portland, Washington DC, and I saw the public access thing. So when I came here, I immediately went to, I believe it was the Riley Building, I don't know, it's on Wyoming Avenue near Lackawanna Avenue, where the ECT was, and I said, you know, I'd like to put my show on. My show had just been banned by family court judges as violent content, mainly because of, just because of its title, "The Church of Shooting Yourself," but, you know, this, I don't want to get into the courts and, and all that, but, you know, I played a newsman, and it was my way of expressing my opinions. But today, with things like, you know, TikTok and, and Instagram, and, and, you know, the, there's, this is not Fourth Estate, this, this is surveillance on top of it, and so, and then you watch the local media, you know, where they're parroting from way up high, you know, from CDC and National Institution of Health and the World Health Organization, saying, you know, you know, it's always been about children and health, and now people are dropping dead suddenly, you know, and no one questions WNEP, I mean, I, I know the people who I see on, I play trivia with them, I know them, you know, but I know, also know they would have lost their jobs if they didn't parrot this CDC line on, you know, lockdown, everything's, so they privatized all these federal funding things, and, and I believe the whole city is sort of in a time warp, because between, between the 60s, 70s, 80s and everything, you know, we, we have this government, and there's no public access anymore. There's, I hear people talking about public access, that, that's a corporate law, that the media companies are supposed to give public access to people, and that's been co-opted by the government, to the point where my time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Good evening, Council, Dave Dobson, citizen of Scranton. Okay, I have noticed this in the past too, there was a letter in The Times from Mrs. Barb O'Malley, I'm sure everybody up there knows who she is, and it stated that a bunch of students up at the U on Mulberry Street did not hit the button for the safety light, it's LED strip that runs straight across, and in a stormy, kind of nasty night. And in the past, I actually had a student step off the curb talking on a cell phone, and, you know, he didn't hit me either, so it would be a nice gesture if you people would send them a letter to try and coach their students to be more careful, because I was doing 20 miles an hour instead of the 30, that was illegal, and that's, you know, I didn't run them over, don't want to run them over. And a few weeks, a week or two ago, there was an article, I'd been on the dump, the landfill up at Shroop and Dunmore, and they were cited for odors up and down the valley. I mean, there was one mentioned Archvall's, which is quite a few miles past the dump, and then Jefferson Township, and possibly Lower Dixon City, and of course, we've been getting it, Dunmore's been complaining all along, and possibly further south there, so it's just something I thought I'd mention. And once again, apartments downtown should have parking spots off-street for their tenants, that's all there is to it. You're going to park out the people that are trying to run a business down there, and, you know, after 5 o'clock, it seems like a ghost town before 5, and then after 5 o'clock, 5:30, the whole street's parked up, you know, so that's ignorable on the first of the month, because a lot of people are going down there for dinner and everything, but there and again, you know, you're, some people may or are probably taking parking spaces and going up to their apartments and getting cozy. You know, last week, we had a COVID denier, or COVID rumor, now, you know, there's 1.2 million people died, a lot of nurses and doctors were so overworked, especially nurses, because they're the worker bees, they just left the profession, they just decided, hey, I could go be a high school nurse or something like that, and baloney on a 16-hour day, trying to save somebody in a hopeless situation, and dragging this home to my family, and having them all sick. And, you know, we have an anti-mask and anti-vax crowd, and I'd just like them to know that the figures I have, that anti-mask and anti-vax people die at a rate of possibly as high as 250%, that's two and a half to one, of people that do take it seriously. The reason I take it seriously is I have four time bombs piled on me. And so I'm not trying to insult anybody, I have to wear a mask, and at home, I don't wear a mask, and if I'm out on the lawn somewhere and I talk to you, I won't wear a mask, but in here, you know, I'm being careful, because I'm not in a hurry... But in here, you know, I'm being careful because I'm not in a hurry to meet the devil. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
I'd like to start by thanking Mr. King for his impassioned defense of the city last week. It was excitable and frankly, endearing to hear someone so passionate about what the city has to offer to the denizens and for visitors. It's not very often that people discuss everything that Scranton has to offer. And even I myself spend a lot of time discussing what it could do better. So it's nice to hear people who notice and recognize and are very proud and very quick to promote the city of Scranton. That's a passion I share. I was born here in the city, and I spent my youngest formative years living on Alder Street. And then as an adolescent, I lived on Vine Street. And while I currently do reside in Wilkes-Barre, I still work here in the city. And I've spent a lot of my free time here in the city as a visitor and as a resident with friends. And I really do believe in this city. So I understand that sometimes my message or my thoughts move faster than my words do. And I can, my statements can be easily misconstrued. So I apologize for my suggestion that Scranton doesn't have anything to offer. My point was that the city of Scranton, especially in our neighborhoods, specifically in the downtown, doesn't have much to offer to people in terms of actual material living conditions. We discussed afterwards that if I wanted, if I lived in the downtown and wanted to go grocery shopping, I would be very hard-pressed to do that without a car, doubly so if I had any limitations of walking. And there's really only one grocery store accessible from the downtown, and it requires a lot of walking downhill and then back uphill and through gravel and dirt and rocks and with no clear path. So the people in the downtown specifically are restricted to using cars in order to go shopping, to provide themselves for food, for clothing, for shoes. And all of this has to be done outside of the community. So the residents in the downtown and in many other neighborhoods are forced to rely on their cars to then leave the community, to spend their money, and then to come back with their items. And this is a very strong developmental oversight that most cities in America, and Scranton is among them, has, that needs to be worked on. And a lot of other people have recognized this. I believe it was on Thursday, I saw in the newspaper that a study was being done now to try to get a grocery store into the downtown. So that way, the residents can access it and go shopping within their own community, work within their own community, and have a place where people in the community can go and interact with each other. And there are plenty of other places currently, a number of coffee shops or even small parks. But none of these are necessarily support everyday living. And that's what the city and many other cities around need to invest in. We don't have these systems set up. One of the ways that we can make sure that this gets set up is first by replacing the parking lots with actual usable, inhabitable spaces. I'd love to speak tonight about the lack of necessity for parking garages up near Naog, when we have so many parking lots, as I've said multiple times, in the downtown that aren't used at all. So replacing those with mixed-use buildings, with the grocery store on the first floor and apartments and condos above them, is how all cities were built up until about 1950. That's how much of downtown Scranton was. That's how most of the cities ever were built up until the suburban development and car dependency. So reimagining Scranton as a city for people to live in without the necessity of cars and for people to live in their communities, not just reside in their communities but actually live in them, is a process that requires a lot of mental realignment for how we relate with ourselves and with our communities. I'll touch briefly on one of the things that this involves, of course, is actual walkability for anybody who can't physically walk. And as mentioned earlier tonight, our crosswalks are standard. And they're actually in pretty good shape in terms of the actual curb. But they fill up with debris, dirt, snow, ice. It makes it very difficult for anybody who can't step over that to cross the street, creating barriers and islands between us and the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Delmar. Are there anyone else who would like to speak? Fifth order, 5A motions. Mr. Smirle, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. King.
Sure.
I want to start by speaking about the petition that is circulating to stop the expansion of Geisinger CMC that I guess has 1,000 signatures on it now. It states that Geisinger is trying to build multiple parking garages. And they name four different spots, the 400 of Colfax Avenue. They say the entire block for a parking garage. We all saw the prints when we went to the meetings. And the one on the 400 of Colfax did not go to the end of the block. It stopped very short. There was a park there, green space. And they also had tiered the parking lot back as it rose so as not to block, I guess, the view from the park or the sun or whatever their agreement was. Okay, that was the first one. The second garage would be the one on the 200 block of Colfax Avenue, the odd side of the block. That is the large one that everybody has a problem with. And that one, they're pretty out front with it. They showed us what it would look like, and they're rendering their drawings. But then the even-numbered side, it says, well, if you read the petition, it says evidently there's another garage going there, but there is no other garage going there. They don't own that entire block, and they have no plans of putting a garage on that site. And then they say the 400 block or the 200 block of Arthur Avenue kind of references another garage there. The 200 block of Arthur Avenue, if you go on the corner, I believe it's the old Sugarman's Estate. They own that property, and they own the building next door. But that's all they own on that block. So I don't know where they would put a parking garage up there. So it's kind of falsely stated on that petition. And if you have to make false statements to get someone to sign the petition, I really don't know how anyone would sign that thing. The reason I'm bringing this up is because it was sent to me to sign. I believe it was sent to all of council. I did call Geisinger CMC Friday morning after I received this petition Thursday night. I asked them if I could speak with them about all the four garages that they're going to be put in. And they granted me a meeting, which was 3:00 Friday afternoon. So I went up, I spoke to them about the garages, and we went over the whole thing again. There are no four garages going up. Their idea is to put those two garages up so that they can go across the street, tear down the old school of nursing, and then tear down the existing garage that looks like is falling down anyway. But the only way the hospital will expand is that way. You can't take, just shut, tear the garage down and tear the school of nursing down if you plan on expanding the hospital. So the reasoning for the expansion of hospital, while I was there and anybody that goes by Geisinger or goes up to Naog Park, you normally see five, six ambulances there at all the time now. It's kind of strange to see that many ambulances there all the time. But I assume that's how all hospitals are. So I had asked the person I met there about the five ambulances and why, you know, why they were there pretty much constantly. And there was a few more parked around the street. So I was told that they have 38 beds in the emergency room and that they normally run between 100 and 110% above capacity for the emergency room. So how do they get so many people in there? So if you've been in the hospital in the emergency room, you will see beds lined corridors with people laying in the beds, waiting to be taken care of. If you go into the waiting room, there's people there that have IVs already started, and they wait many hours to get some kind of emergency care. The beds in the hospital, if they even added 40 more, that would just take care of what's there now. And then you get, you know that Moses Taylor plans on closing the ER. What do we do with those people when the ER closes there? So to accommodate the rest of the people in the waiting room, I really don't know what the answer is, except for Geisinger to expand. But the only thing I see to this entire expansion is, the last thing standing is this single tall garage. And I don't know the answer to that one. That's, hopefully, they'll come to a conclusion with that. But what do we do with all these people that are waiting if we don't put a garage there so they can move forward and tear the other ones down? I don't see how the entire city zoning ordinance and the expansion for Geisinger hinges on one single building, one garage, or whatever you want to call it. That's all I have on that issue. The other one is what Doris brought up, the new thing that's posted now. Mr. Volenberg, I'll give you a copy of this. If you would send it to the Recreation Authority and ask if they allowed someone to use their logo and to kind of say, if you look at it, it says, "Naog Park," the image speaks for itself. And it shows, it shows like a little town that I guess they called Geisinger. And it's, it says opposing zoning. The image speaks for itself, move it to downtown. I don't believe that's the Recreation Authority's position. I don't think they take a position on either side. But I would ask if you would forward this to them and ask if they know that someone is using their logo and making it look like it's their idea.
I'll take care of that tomorrow, Mr. Smirle.
Thank you. Another issue is on that website and on that petition they have out. It says that Geisinger is, or with the Recreation Authority, with Naog Park. Well, there is no contract. There never was a contract. Where the money came from, it's $100,000 a year. It's gifted from Geisinger CMC to Naog Park. It was all started by Mr. Gattens and the Recreation Authority. I know this because I was at each meeting with him and with Attorney Kelly. We met with Geisinger multiple times. And at the final meeting, they came, they offered to donate to Naog Park, no contract, no, nothing, for 10 years. And I did ask them while I was there. I said, "It says you're pulling out of this contract." And they said, "They said no such thing. They don't know where that came from." But that's another untrue thing on that petition. That's all I have on Geisinger. And one last thing, Mr. Volenberg, crossing the street on Music Street and South Webster Avenue, someone sent me a picture of like five cars parked on the sidewalk and pretty much blocking the view of trying to get out onto Music Street. If you would pass that to our police department, ask them to see what they can do to that, to remedy that. And it's also a big crossing area for children in the morning and then after school. So if you forward that-
I'll send that to the police department and the city engineer.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smirle. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you. Before I forget, the last comment by Mr. Smirle reminded me of this. Ms. Schumacher brought up South Washington Avenue and Broadway. Was that the corner? If we could send that over to DPW, maybe we can get the vac truck over there or see what it is that's blocking that drain there.
I will, sir.
So let's see, for today, thank you, Frank, for reaching out on a couple of different items I had last week, the 1102, 1104 of Dartmouth Street. I got that information today. I'll take a look at that when I get home. Reaching out for the rights-of-way on Meadowbrook. Did we get anything on, we brought up, I know there was some talk of maybe the bars and stuff in the city, but did we get an answer on the American Legion's VFWs?
Not as yet. I added that to the original request.
All right, thank you. I also asked for some information on the pave-cut information. Are we currently billing the utilities for our pave-cuts? And if we could have the information for the last six months leading up to the month of February, did we receive anything on that one?
Not as yet. We have a new pave-cut inspector as of this week, and she's working with the DPW director to compile the list.
All right. It's actually the pave-cut inspector that they've hired for that position. Is there two other floaters that are also working with the pave-cut inspector? Do you know? And you might have-
I know of one. I know of one who might be working with the Science Department.
Okay.
I'll check on the other.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We got the mayor subscriptions and the 1007 Quincy Ave. So thank you for that information. I'd like to, I know I made a request a couple of weeks ago, but could we make a request to Eileen Cipriani to see if she could come in? If we could revisit our ARPA plan to see if some of those things are still relevant to the city since things have changed in the last two years? I'd definitely like to take a look at those because some of, I believe, maybe some of those items on the list may not be relative today. I did have a chance to take a look at the county plan for McDade and the swim complex there. It looked like a pretty decent plan with the pool and the splash pad. It looks like it's going to be about $3.4 million, which is a lot less than the estimate we were given for Naog. So I really would like to start getting into this ARPA plan. They do plan on using ARPA money for that. So I would like to get into our ARPA plan with the funding that we have at this point in time. I believe it's $4 million. I think we should be looking into a swim complex up at Naog. I know, Frank, you've asked it several times, but council is waiting for a side-by-side comparison from the city planner. If we could follow up on that again, a comprehensive list from the 1993 plan or zoning ordinance to the 2023 ordinance.
I will, sir.
Thank you. And the last thing I have is at 1713 Wyoming Avenue. I know there's a permit in for a carport there. It's been tied up for about a month. If we could just get an update on that. So 1713 Wyoming Avenue.
I will, sir.
That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes. I have a number of things to mention tonight. First off, Mr. Spindler brought up the aggressive dog legislation, which I had previously had conversations about with people within the administration back, I think, in the fall time. But I haven't heard any news on that or where that is at, if there's going to be an ordinance brought forward to council just to further tighten up restrictions or just to better enforce for aggressive dogs within the city. And over the weekend, I had visited up in North Scranton, and there were a number of neighborhood concerns, particularly around the Reece Street and Green Bush Street, those areas. I forwarded those all to Mr. Volenberg already, but they were requesting a traffic study because there are cars that are frequently speeding by. It's a 25 mile per hour zone, but a lot of cars speed by and run through the stop signs. And there's a preschool nearby and a lot of safety concerns happening there. So they'd also like to have patrols out there to monitor during school times to make sure they're enforcing that people are stopping at the stop signs and to decrease the risk to any children or residents or people that might be walking by. And there are a couple of other concerns there, too, and one of them about an aggressive dog that's often loose in the neighborhood. So we'll have all those forwarded along. I received an email about 539 Wheeler Avenue that there's been several complaints about in the past. And they had just put out some trash and placed it against a tree just earlier today. And so I had to for that along to code enforcement to get them to take care of that and to issue any quality-of-life violations that need to be issued. And with regards to something I mentioned last week, which was handicap parking downtown. So now that DPW has the new sign maker, I'm expecting that they'll be able to update the handicap placards downtown- the handicap placards downtown, but I I also don't see why they can't start the line painting downtown to make it more obvious for those for those spots that are specifically designated for disabled people or those who have a handicap placard. And I was even downtown during a weeknight last week, and I was in a business place of business, and there was a spot that we've received a complaint about previously that's on Penn Avenue that that they said there's often people parking there who aren't supposed to be in that spot and don't have a handicap placard. And sure enough, I took a look at the vehicle. They did not have a placard, and that was at the time that I went into the business. And then a little while later, came back out, this large pickup truck was was still there in that spot. So I think there's a few things that need to happen in addition to just making those spots more obvious, but even for the people who still notice that it's a handicap designated spot and will park there anyway, we need SPD to be enforcing downtown. We need them to be ticketing these vehicles because it is not right that someone who needs that spot is not able to park there and needs to park God knows where else and walk with a walker or use their wheelchair. I mean, I treat patients all the time who use assistive devices to to walk, and I know those people might not want to visit downtown Scranton for that specific reason of not having a place to to park if they were to go alone, or they would need someone to drive them and drop them off wherever they're going so that they could go and park because those spots are not available. So this is something that really gets gets to me because I I want to make sure that this happens and that it gets enforced. And that's enough on on that matter for now. On another topic, last week I did go to the Planning Commission meeting. I agree, I think that they would benefit from some training to help them make the the meetings more smoother, to make sure that they're adhering to Robert's rules. That's that's very important, not just for for bodies like council, but for our commissions and boards. So I would I would like to advocate for for training for for their members just so they feel more comfortable in in going about the meetings. And I do appreciate Councilman Smurl for clarifying some of the misrepresentation that were in the petition that was going around, although I appreciate people, you know, signing a petition and bringing that forward to council. We want to make sure that people have all the facts and and information. And I do have a number of comments about the zoning ordinance itself, but next week it'll be on our expected to be on our legislation for introduction. So I'm going to hold those comments until we have it in front of us and have that up for for further discussion. And that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick?
Okay, I have two concerns, and I hate keep I hate to keep bringing them up, but there's they haven't been resolved. The first one is the Western Field Pool. It is probably four, five, six months that I keep bringing up this concern. We have members that are taxpayers and residents and customers that utilize this pool for socially. They utilize it maybe for therapeutic reasons, they or rehab, they might have had a knee replacement or a hip replacement. And these are, I've been in correspondence with four lovely elderly women, and their concerns remain the same. And and now with with the exit of the Parks Director, they're even more concerned because prior to this, they were told or through me and through the information we received from the Parks Director that some progress was being made. Progress like, okay, we're going to interview for some lifeguards, which is great because we needed them. We don't know the status of that. The Parks Parks Director was going to set up or conduct certification process right at the pool. Did that happen? We don't know. So what these these lovely ladies want, and and I don't blame them, is like every time they can't renew their membership because, which is usually yearly, and they like to do it. They were told you got to do it monthly. So when they renew it monthly, and then they find out that three out of five days the pool is closed, it's just not fair. So what they want, and the latest one I received was from one of the ladies that contacted three one one and asked for a schedule. That's a reasonable request, something weekly, something they can plan on, and they have yet to receive any information. So I do know that Mr. West is the interim director. So would you please forward these concerns, ask for some updates? We don't want this get to, you know, go to the wayside for these ladies during this process. And then one of them like, one of them proposed a great idea. Sometimes the best ideas come from our residents. And the one she stated me today on a phone message right before the meeting, she left a message is, okay, there is there is a director posted, the position's posted, there's a job description, but maybe we can have administration change that job description to include a person that has is a certified lifeguard. Or upon being hired, a condition is to get certified because that person's office is is in that building. And, you know, maybe once or twice, if it presents itself, this director could fill in. I know it's a busy position, but they could fill in and and make sure that these ladies get to swim, and not just the ladies, there's other groups that are suffering, too. The night swim, the, you know, the the school-aged children. So please, I'd like an update for them, and and they deserve it. And then next, so there's this is another one, too, that's driving me crazy. So three or four weeks ago, it was brought to my attention, and the exoneration process, so in other words, I'm just going to just real quick. If say if you owned a double home, you live on the one side, and you haven't rented out the other side for twenty years. This is an issue of residents that came to me. And their concern was, how do I get permanent exoneration? Which means you don't have to pay the fee for the other side because no one's living there. So I put that forward because in going through my emails today, there was a bunch of exoneration concerns a year ago this week. Some of them were resolved, but even then, I did not hear what we were told a couple of weeks ago by the Treasury Department. We were told in an email that permanent exoneration means you got to cut the power off to that other apartment, which is absurd, especially with the cold spells we had, and this is right around that time when it was brought forward. So, okay, I was told that. So what I do, I followed up with a question as to when this policy happened. I never heard of it. Is this a new policy? And if so, when was it approved? How was it approved? Is it on the books somewhere that none of us know about? And the response from the treasurer was, well, that's has to, I'm sorry, but that information has to come from the code enforcement, because I wanted something in writing. So then I brought it up again, and someone said, well, the code enforcement, someone is on vacation. Well, I don't think, you know, the office is, there's enough people there just to get me the answer. So with that said, I mean, I said this in caucus, when I have to beg for a policy, literally for weeks, I'm afraid that this doesn't exist, and and I hope that's not the case. So, Mr. Volenberg, please, just give me the policy. I mean, please reach over. You've been great with corresponding, but this is this, I just don't understand that in order to get a permanent exoneration, you have to cut the power off to the other side of the house.
I'll follow up, Sarah, and I'll escalate to the mayor's office.
Thank you very much, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. I think you had one more thing.
Yes, in caucus, we discussed about the pools for the summer. Within the last month, I did reach out to Parks and Rec to see what the update on the pools were going to be for the summer, what pools needed repairs, what pools were going to be open. I did get a response saying that Tom Riley would be looking into this to look at the pools and what the conditions of the pools. So, Mr. Volenberg, can we reach out to Larry West to see if if either he or if he could reach out to Tom Riley to get an update on all of the city pools, what their status is moving towards the summertime, and if there's any repairs or anything that needs to be done to each of those sites?
I'll take care of it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. I have a few items in reference to the garbage fee and the exonerations. I spoke to the mayor this afternoon and and brought this very thing up. She had indicated to me that this is a priority for her and for her administration. She told me there were two hundred and eleven exonerations that should qualify as permanent exonerations, and they're working with the tax office to try to get this resolved so that they don't have to go through this every year.
They shouldn't, but did she say anywhere that you have to shut the power off as as a way to do it?
No, I think that they're trying to work through that process, and they're trying to improve that process so that it it doesn't end up having to be that way. I guess the fear is that, you know, some people like, like there are a list of people who own apartments, and it's been twenty years since somebody has been in there. And those are the ones she's talking about with the two hundred and eleven. But a lot of those ended up getting the three hundred dollars pulled out of their or had had to pay it, the the three hundred dollars, and now the city will have to, you know, reimburse them the three hundred dollars. They're trying to come up with a process to avoid that for for those people that they know for a fact. Then I think they're going to come up with some type of process with the code enforcement now that they're, I believe we just got a bunch of new code enforcement vehicles and where they're still in the process of hiring a few more code enforcement people. But if there's some some new ones to avoid this having to shut the power off thing, they could approve them and then maybe, you know, on an annual basis, go and, you know, double check to make sure that, you know, nobody's saying that, no, it's it's never rented, and then the next year it is rented, and they end up owing the city. So she did tell me it's a priority, and they're working on it, so I'll I'll take her on her word on that. The city audit, I think I mentioned something earlier in the caucus, but the audit, I was informed that the audit cannot be completed until they receive the Gatsby seventy-five report on the city's OPEB plan. This came from Matt Dominus. He said, we continue to inquire, but no one seems to have answers. Additionally, we need legal representation letters. This was sent to Matt, and I'm sorry, from Kelly from Kohansky's. So there's two things. They need legal representation letters and that Gatsby seventy-five report. However, Kohansky indicates that the audit is in fact complete, and they said they can have it to us next week with modifications for the missing information, if that's what we we would like to see. And I think earlier we requested to ask Kohansky to come into caucus next week on March seventh prior to our our meeting to give us an update as to where they're at. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Volenberg. Let's see, also, I don't, okay, I already mentioned that third order. There is going to be a new auditor. The city BA's office held a Zoom meeting Friday, February seventeenth with Clifford, Lawson, and Allen of Pittsburgh, PA. They're the new audit firm for the city that's been hired. Scranton Municipal Rec Authority, so we received February second meeting minutes, and they'll be placed in third order for council's March seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Also, Dave Trevissani from NDC slash CDPS advised that City Hall, apparently the workers here in City Hall, we're typically, they would have to pay ninety-two dollars a month for parking, and I believe that the city is now, they're if they're waiving the fee or covering the fee for those for those employees. Mr. Volenberg, could you check on legislation? I know that I believe that the Scranton Police Department had recommended permit parking for the thirteen hundred of Sanderson Avenue. Can you just see where we are with that legislation?
I'll follow up with them and the law departments, sir.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Also, with respect to the zoning ordinance, the timeline is going to go as follows. We plan to introduce the zoning ordinance that was passed by the City Planning Commission. Plan to introduce it next Tuesday, March seventh. And then the plan is that the following week, it would move the sixth order would be advanced, and it's the proposed ordinance that was brought to us by the City Planning Commission. And if it makes it through sixth order, it will then be tabled until we can have a public hearing on April eleventh at five forty-five right here in City Hall chambers, and then ultimately, there would be a vote on April eighteenth, seventh order to enact the proposed ordinance. I have requested from Mr. Volenberg if you would invite Don King, the city planner, to come in on April, excuse me, March fourteenth, March fourteenth for caucus to do a presentation for council and for citizens. So that's the game plan for the proposed zoning ordinance and the timeline. That's all that I have at this time.
Five B for an induction in ordinance establishing an environmental advisory council for the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'd like to table this. First of all, we need more information. I don't like the fact that it's another commission that only has three members, no balance with three members. I voted no when it was amended for the other one we did a couple of weeks ago because and the claim was, we can't get people to to fill these seats. Well, I believe that they can get people to fill this one because a part of the backup for this resolution, it states that, oh, there's a bunch of people interested. So let's table it. Plus, we need more information as as to how how we're going to appoint people to this because the process, we're not, I don't know anybody else. I'll just speak to that. Anybody else wants to jump in? But basically, for the main reason is three. I have a problem with just only three members, so.
Okay, so there's been a motion to table five B. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second to table five B on that question.
On the question, I am in favor of an environmental advisory council for the city of Scranton. I think it's important that we do our part as a city in protecting our environment and figuring out better ways that we can do that. I don't think that there's been enough of that. I think we've been making small changes towards it, but there's a lot more that we could do. So I'm excited about the possibility of this council, but I'll I'll vote to to table tonight just so that we could tease out the number of members that we think should be on this council.
On the motion, I also, in support of this legislation, however, I'm in agreement, especially with the backup information indicating that there seems to be a large number of people interested in serving on this committee, so for council. So I'm in support. I will support tabling this motion.
I'm going to be in support of tabling it as well. We did speak to the Housing Appeals Board over the last few weeks, and one of the things that I brought up at that point in time was the the three members on the board. I do think we need to have at least five members on this board. If you take this council and past councils in the last few years, we have a good makeup of all parts of the city. I feel like with a board of three, you're not going to have that makeup at this point in time. We do have most parts of the city covered. I do think we need at least five there. I do think if we're going to establish a new board, someone from the administration does need to come in, give us a presentation.